So we should be good to go. Those are from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. We'll be closed just for an hour tomorrow for our Christmas party here at City Hall. Our Gateway West Grant Award, that received a lot of views as well, so we're really thrilled to have that funding available to continue to improve the walkability and sidewalks in town. Got a lot of support for our police officers with that post that we did about their graduation from the academy. I've just got what's up on the LED sign right now. Of course, the wagon rides, but also Mary had shared information about guitar classes for veterans. That's up, as well as Brian Goday had asked us to share information about the Lady Bucks basketball tournament on 28th and 29th. So we have that running right now as well. Submitted on Monday, looking to get some help going to an infrastructure training for Jerry and Brown that they might be interested in for Stormwater. Of course, there was that the grant, the press event on the 10th in Morgantown for the Gateway West Award, as well as our REEP Award that you all already knew about. And looking at the safer fire grant for 2019, doing our city snapshot for bikeable communities, and a few other grants that have got listed there. Looking ahead, we've got on the 14th, I've also been putting out some information about the Buchanan 2025 survey, as well as planning process, and that January 14th will be the big community input meeting where we hope people come down to the public safety complex to help with that. Got a few other upcoming events there, but they're in the report, and if you have any questions about them, or anything else?
Questions for Kelly? Thanks, Kelly. Keep up the great work. The whole year with us now. Time flies when you're having fun.
That's right.
Okay, next up is our Public Works Director, Jerry Arnold. Somebody called you the Jer Bear at the Waste Collection Party yesterday.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know.
I appreciate that. That's one of the more mild names I've been calling.
Just today alone.
We received a report back from Brick Street Safety and Law enforcement for a visit conducted back on November 5th. We visited the Traders Alley Project and the San Ludlow Sewer Plant. Mr. Bradley reported that we had only two injury claims and four incident reports. For the current policy year, the two claims, a sprained ankle and a lacerated finger, was a total cost incurred $645, and there were no indemnity injury claims. He congratulated the City of Buchanan King for the reduction in frequency and severity of claims, and he recommended a couple safety topics to be discussed in our Department's safety meetings, which I shared with the supervisors at our supervisors' meeting Tuesday. Water Department, they cleaned the sediment basins last week, and the stub shaft repairs, you remember, that's been a lengthy process. They have been made, completed on Tuesday, and they're back up to full capacity. So we're waiting to see how that works. Completed the service installation for Todd Falster out of Rushmore Park. Sewer Department, Crew One completed the Wood Street Project, except for the street repairs. Got a portion of concrete to finish that up. Crew Two's assisting the maintenance crew, and the maintenance crew's performing service on equipment. Waste Department hired a new employee to replace one that resigned. The new employee's name is Logan Shannon, and he's been doing a great job for us. Street Department, Traders Alley Project, the base course pass swall has been placed, and the crew will be finishing up some concrete curbing and pouring the Milkman Lane intersection as weather permits. The crew will be preparing for a cut between Friendly Way and the Public Safety Complex parking lot for the installation of curb, and they installed about 120 feet of new guard rail up on Upper Drive. Under Engineering, the Gateway West Engineering Surveying Project Design for Phase Two is approximately 98% complete. Waiting on some requested information back from the DOH before this mission can be completed. The Water System Improvement Project, Contract One, will resume in the next two weeks, and will begin its sheets and work towards Pizza Hut. The anticipated completion date is the end of January 2019. The Adrian PSD Water System Improvement, Adrian PSD will be including the additional water line upgrade project into their current project. Estimated cost to the PSD will be approximately $360,000. Requested information by the Water Department regarding the need for the upgrades to the Water Department's water distribution system being included in the PSD's base bid contract. They have been added to the third supplemental water purchase agreement. The couple will receive the necessary documents, and later will execute the third supplemental water purchase agreement, and that is, they've requested for additional gallon each from the City of Buchanan to be provided to the Public Service District, and we have some infrastructure within our system that has to be upgraded in order to provide that to them. So they've included that in a grant that they're applying for, for an extension, and based upon that, the supplemental agreement will be executed, and then our improvements will be part of that grant essentially.
And we're going from 10 to 12 and 1/2 million gallons per month, is that correct?
That's all I have left is questions.
Questions for Jerry Arnold? Will you stick around until after Andy's report? I have a couple of comments and potential questions that would involve the two of you, if you don't mind.
Four will.
Just for a couple minutes. I appreciate you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Okay, next up is our Finance Administration Director, Andy Jenkins.
My report will be shortened to make it your packet. So I'm going to give you your balances on your enterprise funds on November 30th of 18. Well, I would. I forgot to put waste collections in there.
I noticed that.
So let me skip down to water. I'll have to get to waste collections next time. I'm not in the middle of something. So water checking, 258,000 in checking. The CDs are 956,000. The ACP project funds remaining are 850,000. That's the water board. Sanitary Board checking, 489,000. CDs 113,380. With a side note, I'll report to you next meeting, we just put some more funds in a CD for the sanitary board for $100,000. Consolidated Public Works Board, 108,962, and they have that CD that remains in the cemetery for $227,000. The Fire Civil Service Commission met last evening, and they're going to be recommending job, those job descriptions that JB talked to you all about for the fire captain and lieutenant, as well as the rank structures that he had recommended to come in line with the accreditation and to be equal or mirrored to what the volunteers are doing. So that'll be on the next packet, just a heads up on that. The volunteer fire insurance renews on January 1. That insurance is for volunteers and their equipment. We share that premium with the county. We pay about 43% of the premium, and the county pays 57%. The city's portion of that premium actually went down. Last year, we paid 22,180. This year, it's going to be 21,601, and that was due to an accident that had been, that happened a few years ago. That came off as a history, and then on the other end, it actually, we had some things go up with exposures, more hours of volunteers, and more calls, but in the end, it ends up being a little less.
About 600 bucks, huh?
Yep.
Questions for Andy? Thanks, Andy. I've got some comments I'd like to make on our utility operations, and it impacts both the day-to-day operations side as well as the fiscal side. You know, when I started with the city nearly 36 years ago, we didn't have this great thing, social media. Everybody knows what that is. And one of our more persistent, if not chronic, critics posted something just a couple of days ago referencing things that if they were taken true on their face, would establish illegal activity on the part of our city utility operations. And while not, while this individual doesn't have a broad following, he does have a vocal following among the people that track him. Basically, the statement was made that the utility rates have more than doubled in the last two to three years, meaning my time as mayor and this current city council, and that monies that had been collected by our utilities were underwriting my, not the council's, but my pet projects, which he has identified as Jawbone Park, the Traders Alley Project, the Dog Park Project, the Colonial Theater Project, and other things like that. I just want our citizens to know and be mindful of that old adage of not drinking the Kool-Aid. This is taken from the West Virginia Public Service Commission's site just this afternoon. So these are their December 2018 statistics, and I'll be happy to share the site. Everybody can look at this on their own. According to the State Public Service Commission, there are 369 regulated water utilities in West Virginia. Of those 369, the City of Buchanan ranks number 39 in most affordable water services. This means that 330 of the 369 water utilities charge more for their water than does Buchanan. Buchanan ranks at the 10.5% level in most affordable water services. Further, according to the State Public Service Commission, there are 321 regulated sanitary sewer entities in West Virginia. Of those 321, the City of Buchanan ranks 173 in most affordable sewage services. This means that 172 sewage providers charge less than Buchanan, and 148 charge more for their sewer services than does Buchanan. Buchanan ranks at the 53.9% level in most affordable sewer services. The last water utility increase in Buchanan was affected by ordinance 392 that was enacted on July 16 of 2015. The last sewer utility increase in Buchanan was affected by ordinance number, I forgot to put the number in, that was enacted on June 1, 2017. The last waste collection, that is our garbage increase in Buchanan, was affected by ordinance, it was enacted in 2011. So we're seven full-plus years since the last garbage rate increase. Our four utility boards are all separate and distinct statutory corporations that are prohibited from commingling of finances with general fund or other utility board accounts. Our city is prohibited by state statute from using water, sewer, or waste collection funds to pave streets, operate the public safety complex, build sidewalks, operate the Stockard Youth and Community Center, or the Colonial Theater, or the City Dog Park, or the City Library. Only operations related to the board functions may be sustained by the revenues generated by state-approved tariffs. All accounts of the City of Buchanan are subject to both annual internal and external audits. Our city has never, not once, ever been subject to any cited failure by any auditor for misuse or appropriation of any utility or general funds. The mayor of Buchanan cannot unilaterally establish funding priorities for the general fund, or for that matter, for any utility board, as there must be a majority support for all expenditures by either the city council or the appropriate utility board. Our current Director of Finance and Administration has been in our city's employ for going on 43 years. Couple other facts that you might not know about. The state of West Virginia requires our utility operations to maintain a 12 and 1/2% reserve account. Until three years ago, we hadn't been meeting the mark relative to those reserve accounts. So one of the reasons that we had to do the sewer increase last year was to stabilize that board's finances so that we could start to put money in that state-mandated reserve account, which there was virtually none of in our sanitary board. We now have about $200,000 set aside for critical emergency needs as they might arise in our sanitary board operations. And finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out in closing, that the West Virginia Public Service Commission has recommended that all of our utility boards effect rate increases every three years. So in a couple of these instances, we're already at the three-year mark, or the going-on eight-year mark, and we still haven't affected those increases, and all of our boards are very sound. Just wanted to clarify, you can't believe everything that you read, especially on social media. Jerry, Andy, you and one of you have anything to add to any of that? The numbers, I think, speak for themselves, but if you wish to...
Well, I don't have Facebook, so I didn't know about all this, but I'm going to take some exception to anyone saying that anything happened any different. These budgets, this money here in the City of Buchanan is open for the public to look at it anytime they want to. This is public information, and they can look at it. I love this city with a passion, but I'll be dying gone if I'm going to go to jail for having money misspent anywhere. I can tell you that right now. Anybody has a question about the books in the City of Buchanan, have at it. Come in here. You're more than welcome.
And they should come to the board meetings. That's where they learn what the board meetings do, what they control, what they...
All of our meetings are...
All of them are open, okay? And I don't think I've seen anybody at a waste board meeting in a good while, except for the guy that cuts down trees. And I served on the water board too, with some of the finest bunch of people. And I guess crock, and I'll hush.
Jerry?
First of all, I don't put a lot of stock in Facebook posts.
We shouldn't.
We should, but it just...
Or people that, you know, that don't want to call in City Hall and find out the facts for themselves. But every project that the street department or any utility board is involved in goes before the board or this council. Every street-related project is presented. We have a five-year capital improvement plan with our streets department that outlines every sidewalk project we're considering, every paving project we're considering, every general maintenance project that we're considering, that the full council votes to budget, to fund. So, you know, to say that it's anyone's pet project is completely misleading, because all of council has to vote to give us that budget to do those projects. And again, like I said, if you have any questions, you know, there's a whole staff out here that's ready and willing to answer those questions. All you got to do is call in.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Andy.
Mr. Mayor? Tom?
Mr. Mayor, the accusations that you're describing are quite serious, and when they're leveled without foundation, they erode public trust in the process and in the concept of government transparency. When this government is entirely transparent, and when it is baselessly accused of being otherwise, it damages the community, and I think that individuals responsible for making such baseless, groundless, false accusations owe an apology to the community for harming the community.
Yeah, I'm not soliciting any apologies, but, and you know, this guy tells me, oh, just let it go. It's, you know, but when allegations are made...
We call him Zen Rival.
When allegations are made about the integrity, I get too much ownership in this place and the people that work for us to just, you know, sometimes if you don't say anything, some other folks might say, there must be something to that. They've never refuted any of those things that were outlandishly stated, and I just can't do that. It's not my nature. It's not so much about me, but when this organization is taking the task, hey, are we perfect? Absolutely not. There's a newsflash. We make our fair share of mistakes, but when it comes to the commingling of funds, which never has occurred relative to our utility board operations and general fund operations, it's just ridiculous. So don't believe it. Come on in, look at our boards. All right, next up is Chief Gregory. Sorry to keep you waiting, Matt.
I got a follow-up.
Yeah.
Get fired up.
I'm going to go ahead and move the podium. Hey, let's see your, I want my back.
Yeah. We get an ambience.
That's right. He is officially deputized. Before I get into the rest of the report, I'd like to take the opportunity first to recognize our new academy graduates, the officers, Angel McCully and Sam Kramer. Very proud personally of each of their accomplishments, and very pleased to have them back with us and back in the city. Just graduated last Friday after 16 weeks of training, and you guys have any, didn't think I was going to put you on the spot. You have any thoughts?
Shh, shh.
Just glad to be back.
Definitely.
Well, stand up and say hello to everybody.
All right. You got me first. One, two, three. One more one. Okay, down you please. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Two robots.
One, two, three.
Say cheese. Good job, guys. We're girls in the first place. I can look back and work in the streets.
There was one officer position open, and they were both so good that we needed to...
That's true.
Angel and Sam, after graduating now, are on our field training program. They began this week, so they're in Week One. The field training program is a 12-week program that our new academy graduates undergo before they work on their own. Angel's currently assigned to Marshall O'Connor, and Sam is assigned to Darren Hissam. Both Marshall and Darren are certified field training officers. They underwent a 40-hour certification course to be able to serve in that capacity for the city. Marshall, would you like to say a few words about the program, about what it entails, just in light of council, as to how the training goes?
The whole goal of the program is to get them familiarized with the job and have on their own. It's three, four-week phases where they're going to rotate between me and Darren to learn how to do the job. The first phase, me and Darren do a majority of the work with them observing, assisting with statements, stuff like that. The second phase works pretty much split 50/50, where they're going to handle calls and actually have input into the investigation. And then third week, they do everything while we observe. That's the way the FTO program is set up to work and get them out on their own.
The process is designed to have daily evaluations, so all told, at the end of the program, we'll have 60 evaluations on our candidates, on our trainees, tracking the progress of training, and again, looking forward to having them on the road and being able to work on their own and being a part of the community. Very excited about your all's futures.
Chief, did Angel, was Angel a VIP?
She was.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. I remember that.
But then so, quite a few hours, actually, throughout this year, so.
And Sam was essentially the equivalent of that in his previous places with Florida.
A lot of background with the Explorer Program, and you've got a passion for that, and a lot of good ideas, so.
Excellent. I think that also speaks, not to pick up your time, Chief, but we've been talking lately about working with our Upshur County School System to establish perhaps junior VIPS and junior fire department, volunteer fire department programs, at least at high school, if not at the middle school, to start planting seeds of thought to entice kids who might be thinking about future careers, that jobs in police departments or fire departments could be something to be right up their alley.
Yeah, absolutely, and we embrace our youth. We're excited to see youth have an interest in public safety, especially police work. This year coming up, as a matter of fact, we have another youth police academy that we're going to host at the police department, and we just hope that that's just yet another extension of more long-range partnerships to have with the youth in our community. And we already have conversations with the VIPS group to realize that as we move into the next year.
Sure.
Matt, that's really good to do that. The national data, I don't know where I heard this, I heard in the last couple of weeks, is that law enforcement, the applications across the country are not nearly what they were.
No, it's not, and you know, we realize that unfortunately in our own experience over the last few testing cycles, struggling to get an applicant pool, and we've come up with recruitment strategies, things to try and garner more interest. But that is a, it is an issue that we have seen here at the city, and it's not just isolated to Buchanan. It is, as you said, Mr. Thomas, it is a universal issue that's faced across the board. Other individuals that I speak to, other chiefs that I speak to throughout West Virginia have the same problem, and it goes, it would be on our state, unfortunately.
Yeah, I think that, you know, one of the priorities of our education system is, should be teaching kids how to learn.
Yeah.
And, but one of the challenges is finding something that's relevant to them, that they have the interest in. And if it's a public safety, or fire service, or, you know, EMT, any of those things, from middle school on up, if there's an interest, you know, let's get that, people that have that interest focused in teaching them how to learn these things. Then they can take that skill and transfer it to other things.
I know. I personally would have liked to have seen something like that when I was a youth growing up in this community to be a part of, because I know once I graduated high school, I was fortunate enough to be able to go to college, and I knew immediately that my major was going to be in criminal justice. And from the very first semester, just because of my interest in the topic, it wasn't worth it to me. It didn't feel like, because I was so interested in it. And, you know, so what you say can certainly be transferred to, with other opportunities, to the youth of our community. So what I, in addition to introducing our officers in our FTO program, what you see here tonight is a fine example of community policing. These fine folks are part of our VIPS program. That is four years strong this year. We'll be celebrating our five-year anniversary next summer. I truly cannot say enough about these fine folks. They are a godsend to the department, to the city, to our community, to the point where I really don't know, in a lot of instances, how we function without volunteers prior to the inception of the program. They're that integral to our operations. They represent the police department in a number of capacities, one of which are non-enforcement duties with assistance such as traffic control of trades, crowd control of special events. If you can think of a special event that occurred in our community, then 9.9 times out of 10, we'd probably have VIPS representation there, at least two or three. The VIPS organization has, is flourishing. It's growing, as you see, and for some of you that have been on council for a number of years, you've seen this room get bigger and bigger in terms of the response to VIPS. It's a growing program, and that's, that pleases me tremendously to see that, if words, that we can embrace our community and connect with our community in the manner that we are through the VIPS program. Because not only is it assistance to us with these programs that I spoke about, it, not only do they represent us very well at youth events, community events such as National Night Out, not only do they assist us with administrative duties around the office, but the connection that we're able to make on a personal basis with each and every member of the community that's become part of the VIPS program, as well as each and every officer. We know each other personally. We just celebrated Christmas together this past weekend, and absolutely filled the community and training room, to the point of we almost, we almost couldn't get everybody in the room. There were so many people there. And that's a testament to the relationship that the police department has with the community and the engagement that we have with these fine folks. And again, as I've always said, our door's always open. We're always looking for more people to join. We're always looking for more people to, to join the ranks of VIPs. In fact, we have some, a few new applications in hand. We're getting ready to train new volunteers coming up this late winter. And I'll have some more on that next month as we begin to really plan for the Citizens Academy. But that's what we use to train the VIPs, but we're gonna open that up to the community again in hopes of making those connections first and foremost, but to maybe give them an avenue for increasing our numbers. VIPs, in fact, outnumber the police department. There are more VIPs than officers. And that's generally the case whenever we go to an event, the Christmas parade, for instance. There were five city police officers working the parade and we had seven or eight VIPs. So they almost doubled us at that event. And that's just, that's a testament not only to the program, but the commitment for all these fine folks here. VIPs is strictly a volunteer program. They do not receive a penny for what they do. And they give so much and so freely of their time. And that's why I cannot say enough about them. In your packets, you'll find an annual report that was prepared by our VIPs coordinator, Steve Wyckoff. It kind of just gives a breakdown of the 2018 events as to what they were involved in, the various amounts of hours that they were able to volunteer. If you look on the fourth page of that VIPs report, the breakdown of each member's hours, you'll see that the total amount of hours was over one thousand three hundred hours that were volunteered to our community through the VIPs program. If we use an average wage calculator, just to inject that, if they were paid, again, which they are not, but if they were, we're realizing a savings of over twenty-seven thousand dollars in the commitment that these folks are able to give so freely to the city and the county. Because of that, I can't thank them enough. I invite them each year at this time to recognize their commitment and their accomplishments to the program. So as a segue to that, I do want to get to the point, we do have certificates from on behalf of the city that we want to award each of our members for their commitment for the year of 2018. But one additional program that's, and you'll find out on pages two and three respectively of your packet, that Steve Wyckoff actually came up with and we had some conversations about and entered into this program this year, is the Presidential Volunteer Service Awards. And as we joined this program this year, several of our members, because of their commitment, because of the amount of hours that they spent volunteering through the program, became eligible for this very special award. Steve, could I call you up here? Mayor, if I could, could I have called one, Steve, just to give a brief overview of the Presidential Awards that we're gonna introduce tonight?
Thanks for all you did, Steve.
Just on a side note, when there were five of us in the very beginning, and I was named coordinator, I took it as a personal challenge to outnumber the city officers. It only took you four years to do that. So now that that goal was met, we're gonna try to double our volunteers as comparison to the city officers.
On our way. We have four applicants in hand.
We have four applicants in hand, which could take us up to sixteen or seventeen. So if anybody that is interested in joining VIPs, please check out our website, check out our Facebook page, stop by the station and get an application. There is no age limit, we take everybody. So stop in, fill out the application, if you're not ready, with us. The Presidential Volunteer Service Award, or PVSA, identifies and recognizes the volunteer hours that each volunteer has put in. Not only is there an adult program, but there's also a junior program as well. So we look for a program that we would be able to recognize not only our adult volunteers, but the upcoming junior volunteers that will be having. There are two different thresholds for teenage groups and I can't remember what they are exactly from a junior standpoint, but the one that's active right now is from a, oh yeah, here we go. So young adults, sixteen to twenty-five, would require one hundred to one hundred and seventy-four hours per year to receive the bronze level award, one hundred and seventy-five to two hundred and forty-nine hours to receive a silver level award, and two hundred and fifty plus hours to receive a gold award. From a adult standpoint, age twenty-six and older, you need to log one hundred to two hundred and forty-nine hours a year to achieve a bronze level, two hundred and fifty to four hundred and ninety-nine hours to achieve a silver level, and over five hundred hours to achieve a gold level, which over the course of the year, five hundred hours breaks down to approximately forty hours a month of volunteer time. So a tremendous amount. This evening, we have several volunteers that have achieved the bronze and silver thresholds, meaning that some of these volunteers have gotten over a hundred hours this year, some of them being volunteers that just started with us this year, and other volunteers that have received, or logged over two hundred and fifty hours per year, which is just a tremendous amount. Being that we are volunteers and we don't receive any type of reimbursement, it is nice to be, for these volunteers to be recognized for their volunteer service. And we appreciate the city allowing us this time and to recognize these volunteers as well.
Before I go into the main awards, what I would like to do is recognize everybody that contributed to the program with a city certificate. This is an example of what they're gonna look like tonight, and I'll call them up and honor them with that. The Presidential Awards, if I could, and just, this is, in my opinion, this is a very special award to receive, it's very prestigious. As Steve said, there are distinctions in the levels of service. The bronze level award comes with a bronze pin, it looks like this. The silvers, each honoree will also receive a certificate that indicates the level of their award, as well as a letter from the White House signed by the president. So what I would like to do first, if I could, Steve, if you could assist me.
Sure.
And calling up the members and awarding them with their certificate and then we'll recognize the Presidential Honorees. Steve Wyckoff's.
Here.
Thank you. Amy Heiberg-Lopez.
So when you guys come up, just come up and stay up and we'll take a good picture.
Thank you. Eleanor Burr. Come stand up here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Let's go sit back down.
Anita Coleman.
My name's Seth. How come you're going to the wedding?
Welcome.
Love it.
We're getting a bit of a theme here.
Yeah. I'll just wait. Scott Coleman.
It's a family affair.
Hopefully next year, we'll be adding one more Coleman to the rankings as well. Morgan Cox, who unfortunately is not with us this evening.
Is it cold in here?
It's like here just came out.
A couple others who are not here this evening. Corey Fox, Jamie Hasbrook, Megan Linger, oh, Angel, I know she left. All right. Kenne Poland, David Rowan.
Olivia Smith, Thomas Warner, and Donna Thompson.
I've got everybody up here.
Here they are, right here.
Thomas was putting them under his hat.
If you guys want to submit applications, you can earn your very own pins next year.
Yeah.
Glad to have you. I want to recognize, if I could, Anita Coleman with the silver award.
Total of three hundred. She had a total of three hundred and forty hours for the year.
Linda Coleman with the bronze level award.
One hundred and one hours last year.
Scott Coleman with the bronze level award.
One hundred and a quarter hours.
Thomas Davis with the bronze level award. One hundred and thirteen seventy-five hours. Jamie Hasbrook was awarded with the bronze level award.
One hundred and nineteen hours.
David Rowan with the silver level award.
Three hundred and fifteen and a half hours. And Steve Wyckoff with the silver level award.
Okay. So do we, we probably need two rows.
Maybe a half.
I don't know.
Can you get him here?
We realize it's gonna be on the floor, right? We probably need two rows. I can get you all to, you could.
Yeah, I'm short. LA, you're short.
Anyone who's short. You wanna sneak behind me? Or if you're not, you can just kind of stagger, like put your.
You gotta get over a little bit, snuggle over there with one.
Yeah.
Turn sideways, guys.
Yeah, okay. One, two, three. One, two, three. Great, there you go. One, two, three. One, two, three. And one more.
And one more would count.
One, two, and three. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
You're welcome. More than thirteen hundred hours.
Yeah, volunteer.
Thank you so much.
Way to go, Buck.
That's not bullying, anyway. We have a lot of people that are volunteers.
Just a couple other quick things, Mayor. Like a quick report on Kalia. Kalia continues to, the Policy Committee needs to continue work on accreditation. We are wrapping up the completion of our time-sensitive standards with the closeout of 2018. We have developed a timeline for completion of the non-time-sensitive standards throughout 2019. You will find that attached to your packets as well. Once we complete the non-time-sensitive standards, that will in essence complete the entire policy manual, ensuring its compliance with the Kalia standards. That does not mean that we're accredited yet, though, that's just the first step of the process. We still, once we have completed the, all policies ensuring our compliance with the standards, the next step is to begin uploading the policies into the Power DMS program and highlighting the various aspects of the policies. One thing that the policy committee has seen that, as we've developed compliance, we are coding the standard number to the policy manager. So highlighting won't be so difficult, we're just have to do a find of the particular standard number within the policies to be able to do that. The final phase will be proofing. We'll have to have a proof of each year showing that we are not just saying we do these things, but we are in fact walking the walk as well. And so we'll be working on proofing. Proofing comes in many forms, it can be either copies of reports, it could be interviews with, such as what Marshall just talked about with the field training program, we anticipate one of the proofs of our training modules would be interviewing him, speaking of how he trains. So proofing could also be pictures or other videos. So it will come in multiple forms, all of which will be uploaded into Power DMS connected with the respective policy slash standards as well. So that'll continue as we progress through 2019. Finally, and I do believe there's also mentioned this in the, in the packets, we do have a vacancy with the police department due to a recent resignation. We are taking applications until January eleventh and anticipate testing at the beginning of February with the physical agility test scheduled for February second and the written test scheduled for February twenty-third, at which time we'll move forward with scheduling interviews with councils as we move into March and preparing to fill that vacancy. And that's all I have here for my session.
Questions for Matt Gregory? I would entertain a motion that we lift F six from strategic issues and bring it to the table so that we can let all of our police-related folks take their leave if they so desire.
Motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Rigger, or second, I think, by Mr. Rylands. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. F six under strategic is now on the table, captioned, "Police, refer vacancy for probationary police officer to the Police Civil Service Commission." You've heard Chief Gregory's plan to move as quickly as possible and you know why time is of the essence. We're only looking at two, maybe we'll get lucky and have three academy sessions this year, but it could be sparse as two.
Yeah, I, the recent board of directors meeting with the Chiefs of Police Association this Monday, we were speaking at the academy and that they're planning on five this year.
Wow, so it's not gonna be cut back like you.
Well, it, no, not to that degree. However, the eight, the January class is obviously, you know, begins in a couple of weeks. The next class after that is April and it already has a hundred applicants.
Right, so.
Thus the reason to have five.
April has a hundred and they take.
They usually take about sixty and keep about twenty or thirty applicants.
Okay.
Wow.
I'd entertain a motion that we approve this timeframe and refer this matter to the Police Civil Service Commission for prompt action.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Thomas, may I have a second to his motion?
Second.
I think I heard Mrs. Alba. I have a motion and a second, is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. And thank you, Matt. Tell the guys that I'll be safe. We appreciate everybody. We appreciate everybody with VIPS. Can't say enough about, you know, there's 1,300 plus, 1317.75. So we're gonna go for 1,400 next year, right?
Absolutely.
Easy for me to say.
And Matt, I want to say that you could use the VIPS for the spelling bee, too.
We, yeah, we do.
Yeah, I like to, I like to get your.
Team name cooked up already, we'll.
What's your team name?
Well.
Or you wanna keep it secret?
Well, it comes with, well, costumes and everything, so. So it'll be a surprise. We just, we kind of built up the height to it.
I gotta get the names in a couple days.
Yeah, I've got it on the form, so.
Okay, I see. And tell JB, too. I'll come down tomorrow or Monday.
We thank you all. You're welcome. You're welcome to stay for the meeting, but we also understand if you have presents to wrap and cookies to bake.
I'll take whatever cookies are.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Well, there's nobody left to talk to now.
We might as well go home.
Where are we?
These are the voice of the people.
We need to do more of their stuff. We generate.
Maybe he's leaving, too.
Yes, he is. Wait till Mary.
Are you freezing, Mary?
Yeah, it's cold in here.
Tom O'Neil, our city attorney. How's it going, Tom?
It's going well. I'll be brief. Been working on a number of things over the past couple weeks, particularly document review on behalf of several departments. Many of those documents have either been previously discussed in the reports or appear in your packet for further action or either under correspondence. Personnel matter that had been previously discussed. FOIA request that we granted in part, denied in part, which appears in your packet. Dealing with a code enforcement issue, particularly with calcitrant property owner who is being charged with failure to maintain and has failed to respond to all of our treaties to resolve this matter for approximately 18 months. And we've finally gotten to the point where we have issued or are issuing a warrant for his arrest on, on his failure to maintain his property because, because he is completely unresponsive, and that is the last tool that we have in our tool belt.
Where is that property?
Good question. Is it Randolph? I think it's on Randolph.
That's right.
It is on Randolph. Finally, opioid litigation documents, those are submitted except for one final fact sheet that we were given an extension on because of our late entry into the suit. I'll be coming in tomorrow morning to finish that up with Ambie and Teresa. And finally, we can discuss this later under strategic issues, but most of the time over the last couple weeks has been spent on the municipal sales and use tax and positioning that, preparing it for approval and hopeful implementation on July 1st.
Questions for Tom? We're gonna have you back up here in a couple minutes.
All right.
Maybe. We got a resolution or something.
Yeah, we do.
Thanks, Tom. Correspondence and information, I'll run through these real quickly. You have the copy of the program from the Police Academy graduation last Friday. Notice of public meeting and the Planning Commission on January 24th at 7 o'clock regarding the 2025 Comprehensive Plan. That's at the Public Safety Complex in the community and training room. You have a notice of Police Civil Service Commission accepting applications for the eligibility list for the position of probationary police officer. You have the Whoville Proclamation. You have my remarks regarding the lighting of the City Christmas tree a couple of weeks ago. You have the city press release. The City Receives Gateway West Grant Award and proclamation congratulating Lady Brady on his retirement. You have the report of the cat and dog activities from the Upsher County Commission as generated out at the animal shelter. You have a FOIA request from Mark Mullins. You have a zoning board of appeals statement regarding properties at 24 and 1/2 Latham as well as 54 South Canal Street. You have a sudden like communication regarding pricing and programming changes forthcoming. You've got a statement, and I'm gonna defer to Councilman Thomas for just a moment. We've received two more substantial capital campaign contributions totaling $22,000 from Councilman Thomas and Warehouser. That puts us up over $260,000. So I have a letter from J. David Thomas dated November 30, 2018, to Mayor McCauley. Dear Dave, my children were here this past Thanksgiving. The Thomas family is going to commit $12,000 to the Stockard Youth and Community Center Capital Campaign. The Thomas family is doing this in loving memory of Michael Alexander Zebor. I'm working with Heinz and Coons for supporting documentation, and when completed, to provide copies for my personnel file and the SYCC Capital Campaign. Sincerely, Dave. Mr. Thomas, we commend you. Would you like to say anything about this, Most Gracious Savior?
Well, I think there's, all of us in our lives meet people that have an absolute positive impact on us and our families. And Michael Alexander Zebor was an individual that was outstanding. He was killed up in Minneapolis-St. Paul a number of years ago, and he was on a full fellowship at Clemson University in Biosciences. He was best friends with my son, John David, my oldest daughter, Casey Lynn, and also Evan Smith, Dr. Smith and Linda's son. And we had talked about, we wanted to memorialize him in a way that makes sense for our community. He was an outstanding athlete at Buchanan High School, wrestler in football. He went to DD eventually after being at WJ for about one semester, two semesters. But he had three majors, and I can't remember the three right now, but they were math, either math, physics, biology, and chemistry. He was a very smart young man and received a full fellowship at Clemson University for Biosciences. So I think people, when we think of the Capital Campaign for Stockard and other organizations that mean a lot to us, whether it's the Parish House, or Salvation Army, or other organizations, and churches and so forth, that there's others of us that have had some resources and been blessed in our lives. And if you can do something to help the community, I think it's very important. And I hope to be able to do more later on someday also. But, and you're gonna talk about the other 10,000 for.
Warehouser, yes.
That was outstanding. And I'm hoping, you know, we can get this Stockard thing going fairly soon. We really have done a, you know, the people that are making commitment, I thank you very much and hope we'll get a bunch more.
Thank you. Next year, we will celebrate the 25th anniversary of the Stockard, formerly Stockard Youth Center, now Stockard Youth and Community Center. It's been something that a number of us in the community have been a part of since the very beginning. People like Don Nestor and Rob Bropp and others. And I can't commend you enough, Dave, but my hat's off to you. Okay, we got some more stuff under correspondence and information. The Buchanan Community Theater Miracle on should be 34th Street. Next year, maybe we'll do, my, the oldest grandson asked me if we could do Miracle on 35th Street next year. He liked it so much. He's not very bright. Just kidding, just a little joke. BCT has committed 10% of their total ticket sales, which will be nearly $700 that will be going to the Colonial Theater project. So we're hopeful that when they do the holiday production and maybe Dracula next October, that we'll be in the Colonial Theater full time and they'll be able to put those productions on in there. The Opera House was a terrific venue for Miracle on 34th Street.
I heard nothing but positive comments. A lot of different people.
It was fun. You've got an article that was brought to my attention relative to the Martinsburg, City of Martinsburg Drug House ordinance. Given the recent passage of ours, I thought it was appropriate for the council to be made aware of that development. Substantial landlord was arrested for repeated violations. And also, City Hall will be closed for an hour tomorrow from noon to 1 while we do our City Hall Christmas staff party. The consent agenda, it consists of four items. The approval of our minutes from our last regular meeting of December 6th, the approval of the city's building and wiring permits, the approval of the general funds bills, payment of bills, and the formal acceptance of resignation of Buchanan Police Department Patrol Officer, Police Officer Sammy Chris. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda. I have a motion by Pam Capery, a second by Mary Albaugh. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The minutes should reflect that Councilor Skinner has joined us.
Hello.
So just, just when we thought we were getting out at 8:30, this means we'll probably be here till 10 o'clock.
That's right. Filibuster coming.
The strategic issues, one of which we've already taken up. First is the draft ordinance, number, ordinance number 433, establishing our municipal sales and service tax and use tax. This had originally been identified in our agenda as a first reading ordinance, but because of the state tax department's view on things need to be going through Home Rule before they'll consider it, and Home Rule isn't gonna be until after the 1st of January. Anyway, Tom.
We had developed a, a process by which we were, we had elect, we had planned on enacting this ordinance before the end of the year and submitting it to the Tax Department, rewarding the ordinance in such a way that it would explicitly only take effect upon adoption of the municipal, of the amendment to the Home Rule Plan by the Municipal Home Rule Board. The, the Tax Department mixed that plan. Part two was, can we, was a, was a two-part inquiry. Could we have first reading now and second reading after the Home Rule Board met on January 16th? And could we, in the meantime, submit all of the rest of the materials that have been gathered together in support of the application? And Department Revenue called me on Tuesday afternoon and said unequivocally, "No, that we cannot, we cannot take any action on this ordinance or on our application submission to them until after the Home Rule Board meets on January 16th and, as we expect they will, grant our amended application." So all the best-laid plans of mice and men and so on.
Yeah, we'll keep plodding along. We're getting it, edging closer. Resolution 2018-19, in case you're wondering, I think we were up to 24, 25. Teresa, because of the tabling of the John Moss deed of dedication that'll be forthcoming in the spring, she decided to go back and pick up that number. So 2018-19 is just a fill-in number so that we've got all the numbers covered, and it pertains to a funding request for the Gateway West Phase 2 project. I think that rascal is in the.
There we go.
Mr. Rigor is helping me out. I'm just gonna read it by caption. Resolution 2018-19 of the Council of the City of Buchanan, formally offering its support for additional funding required on the Buchanan Gateway West 2 Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, project. And I'm not gonna read through all this. This is just one of those things that we are obligated to do to draw those funds down on our recently approved grant. So I would entertain a motion that we approve Resolution 2018-19.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. May I have a second to his motion? I have a second by Mr. Rigor. He beat you by a hair, Mr. Thomas. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. And I'll do a roll call vote. Mary Albaugh?
Yes.
Pam Capery?
Yes.
CJ Rylands?
Yes.
Robert Skinner III?
Yes.
J. David Thomas?
Yes.
Colin Rigor?
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes. I'm gonna sign it and pass it to my right, and then we'll pass it to the left. And sounds like square dancing, rosido and the whole bit. Okay, next up is a request for the City of Buchanan to declare a full-day holiday for this New Year's Eve. It is my recommendation to this council that employees who aren't absolutely required to be at the post, like police officers and firefighters and folks at the water plant and sewer plant, that we give our other employees a four-day weekend vacation. This has already been granted by the state of West Virginia, and I believe the Upsher County Commission. We know the school system's closed down for that period of time. Again, similar to what we have done for Christmas Eve next Monday. I just think it's the right thing to do for our employees, and that's my recommendation. I would entertain a motion that we give our employees a holiday on December 31st, full day. I have a motion by Pam Capery and a second by Robbie Skinner. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I will call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. F4 is another request, looking ahead to 2019. I know it's a whole year off.
Let's do it.
But next year, I would like to propose that on Christmas Eve, we usually work a full day, and on New Year's Eve, we normally work a full day. I would like to give our employees a single holiday, and we would close all nonessential operations at noon on December 24th and December 31st, 2019, so that employees can plan accordingly. That's my recommendation. I would entertain a motion that we approve the two half-day holidays for Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve in 2019.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Rylands, a second by Mrs. Albaugh. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Tom, you wanna give us the, you and Matt are both still here, and Ambie's waved in as well. We have a proposed memorandum of understanding between the City of Buchanan Police Department and the Upsher County Communications Center. This is something that's gonna make us even better. You're gonna hit the highlights for us?
This is, this is in furtherance of Kalia standards. This is simply a non-binding memorandum of, of understanding, formalizing the collaboration between the City of Buchanan Police Department and the Upsher County Emergency Communication Center, whereby all emergency calls are routed through the ECC, and the City of Buchanan does not dispatch. And it, it provides for consultation for any further agreement that may be necessary. It's for a term of five years, if I'm not mistaken. It can be renewed in writing, but it's a relatively perfunctory and straightforward document.
It's another one of those exercises that several of us in the room have sat on the Kalia committee for the past year. We keep, our light bulbs keep collectively coming on that we're becoming better, not just as a police departmental organization, but it's across the board. The evaluation form for city employees has been tweaked because frankly, the Kalia offering that Matt has made part of their accreditation process was shared with Jerry Arnold, Ambie Jenkins, and we've come. Ambie Jenkins, and we've come to conclude that it's a better, you know, it's not a gutting of our evaluation methodology, it's just better. And this is another one of those things that's coming out of the accreditation effort. So you've heard, Matt, do you want to say anything further about that?
Nothing further, other than just what Tom said. It is abridging documents, even though we do not have the ECC function as the city. When we are assessed by CLEA, we still have to adhere to those standards. So this is really nothing new. We've had this informal arrangement with Emergency Communications Center for years and years and years. This just formalizes it for the assessment purposes.
Well, you've talked so much about the past year now, about policy and philosophy, that it comes down to proof. And this is one of those things that, okay, you say you have this arrangement with the CLEA, how prove it? Well, here's our memorandum of understanding. Does anybody have any questions about this? I think we already have a motion. Do we have a motion already on the table?
No motion yet.
But I just made it.
I have a motion by Mr. Rigger. Can I have a second to his motion? I heard Mr. Rylands first, so the motion will be by Rigger, the second by Rylands. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. So Matt, you're free to, I don't think I signed that, I think you just signed that, if I'm not mistaken. Comments and announcements. Mary Albaugh?
Merry Christmas, everyone. And Ambie Jenkins?
Zee Rock, baby.
I heard about it.
Sorry.
Merry, Merry, M-A-R-Y Christmas?
I don't want a Merry Christmas, I'm sorry. I'm sick of being cold.
Anything else?
No, sir.
First of all, I want to thank Dave Thomas for his generous donation for Stockard Youth Center.
Oh, yes.
Yes, I want to...
I'll give you Rock home, baby.
I commend Jerry Henderson for starting the Whoville event downtown. I can see that growing every year, and I want to thank the mayor for being so good about, good sport with coming with the blue hair. I think I wanted to with the hem for that day. Thank the mayor for making a lot of things so vibrant for downtown Buchanan that's keeping Buchanan alive. And CJ too, CJ works his butt off to keep things going. People don't realize what it takes, and a lot of their things are volunteer, which I beg for volunteers all the time to help move different things. And hopefully, some people will come on board this year. And I wanted to thank the city employees for all their hard work and how everybody's working together. And I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and remember, you all need to remember this reason for this season. Thank you.
Mr. Rylands?
I'd echo some of those thoughts that we continue on the path of ascension that we have been on for some time, that we continue to work together and put aside personality issues and turf issues and focus on what's in the best interest of the community. And I think we will continue our path of ascension.
Well said. Mr. Strachan?
Well, good evening.
If you're starting with good evening.
No, I apologize for being late. I spent the day at Charleston. But Dave Thomas, I walked in when we were talking about your donation to Stockard. I too echo your, what others have said. Stockard Youth is a vital part of our community, and I think that, you know, we should support it and always look to make sure that it's serving as many youth as possible. It's truly, you know, unique for our community. Not a lot of places have a Stockard Youth Center. It's not the same as a YMCA, and it's, it takes a lot of work to put on the programming over there. So I thank you for that, and I commend David McCauley and others who have fundraised for the project, for the gymnasium. So, you know, our community really is a special place, and I echo what CJ said because, you know, I've talked to so many people that are part of community leadership in other cities, and no one is rowing the boat in the same direction. And I think it's important that many of our organizations here are rowing the boat in the same direction, and I think it shows. Because when visitors come here, they see that Buchanan really has, you know, has maximized its assets to make it, to make it what it is today. So I appreciate what everybody does, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. Well said. Mr. Thomas?
I wish everybody a safe Merry Christmas, and also Happy New Year. And I do want to say, David, when you were talking about what's on Facebook, my experience is that people that generally use Facebook or Twitter don't have the courage to come to an organization that is transparent, and I think we are transparent. And we have a lot of disagreements within our own council here sometimes, and sometimes they're heated, especially in an executive session. But that's important. But to have somebody go out and criticize us for, you know, specifically you for pet projects and so forth, they ought to come here and say, hey, you guys, why don't you rein in McCauley? They're really, they're not cowards. And I think a lot of people on Facebook are cowards and/or stupid, and that's enough.
Did you get that?
My purpose didn't stop my recording during the conference, so...
Albaugh agrees with me.
Mr. Rigger?
Sorry.
I didn't get the memo that it was diatribe night, so I don't have any... It was a joke, come on. No comment.
You don't want to call anybody stupid?
This is my... This is my Dear Santa annual letter.
Oh, it is?
Does it have a page?
How many pages, David?
Can I just say in the comments?
You can walk like Santa and I'll read it.
Dear Santa.
Oh, that was longer.
First, we're all very pleased to continue Buchanan's sister-city relationship with the North Pole. I look forward to our delegation of talented Sonny Buckers soon heading north to your frozen tundra to install some really nifty benches and murals there in exchange for you sending an elfin committee to our place to scope out the possibility of establishing a satellite workshop and distribution center for your worldwide operations here. We think your workshop here would nicely complement the new Harbor Freight store that was recently opened in Buchanan. We have some sites in mind for a toy plant or perhaps a candy cane and stocking factory. Your elves would soon discover several nifty cafes and bistros here to satisfy their hot chocolate eggnog and cookie yearnings. And for those who may be more Java-oriented, we invite them to try both Mountain Roaster and Stone Tower Brew's coffees. Buchanan is actually the coffee capital of West Virginia. Our donut shop continues to make the very best pepperoni rolls anywhere, and they've got the hardware to prove it. Perhaps in 2019, the elves could even enjoy some hot hard cider during a Sunday brunch. You can park your sleigh for free anywhere downtown on street for two hours and 21 hours in our many lots. We'd be most happy to promote your candidacy for a seat on our Development Authority. Second, we've been a very good community this year. I know you hear that from all towns that write to you, but those other places really don't have all that we have. We still have the coolest downtown in all of West Virginia. Our architecture is fabulous, the music in Jawbone Park is terrific, and the many special events we have throughout the year are like none other in all of almost heaven. In May, it's our Strawberry Festival, followed by Festival Fridays, River Fest, Fall Fest, Halloween, done like no other town around, and about a dozen parades a year. Our history from Bakanga Halas and the Pringle Brothers to Steve Coontz, Ted Cassidy, Greg Barker, Gene Lee Latham, Jimmy Panko, Per Lawrence, and a bunch of other colorful, talented folks from our past just makes us a must-visit venue. We'll be celebrating our cestus centennial during 2019, that is, we're turning 250 years old. Third, as for our actual Santa wish list, we've thought about 12 things symbolic of the 12 Days of Christmas that we'd love to realize during 2019. Please carefully consider our requests. In no particular order, here's what Buchanan hopes to find in its community stocking during the next year. One, our Stockard multi-use building. Please help us break ground as we celebrate 25 years of SYCC in 2019. Two, our Colonial Theater. We'd love to wrap up Phase 2 and start in on Phase 3, and by fall, have Buchanan Community Theater performing Dracula there in October. Three, our Trader's Alley and Oakman Lane project. A summer dedication with our new arches, the finishing layer of asphalt, and installation of the Men in Black car. Four, break ground on the Gateway West project and creation of our Amazing Mile featuring new sidewalks and period lighting from the first Buchanan exit all the way to our beautiful WVWC campus. Five, undertaking cooperation with the state, our ADA sidewalk improvement project realizing 88 new intersect points worth of improvements. Six, welcoming buteras and other new eateries to our amazing downtown. The scuttlebutt is, there's also a new pizzeria coming, along with a brewery and an Irish pub. Seven, the opening of Jester Line. We wish Jared and Lacey Ramsey the best of luck in their exciting new venture bringing virtual reality gaming fun to downtown. Eight, passage of our countywide school levy on January 19. Nine, opening of the new innovation center during summer. Ten, advancing full professional accreditation of both our police and fire departments. Eleven, expanded monthly activities sponsored by our Diversity Appreciation Coalition. Remember, Santa, we're all inclusive in Buchanan. Twelve, a new grant application submittal to realize expansion of our Amazing River Trail all the way to Sego, to our south, and Pringle Tree to our north. And thirteen, one extra request, Santa. Could we please get that new sound system for Jawbone Park? A lot of fun-loving people appreciate Festival Fridays and all of the other excellent events that happen there year-round. In closing, Santa, we hope that you are ever mindful that we're all in this together. Merry Christmas to everyone, and may we all enjoy a very happy, healthy, prosperous, and most importantly, fun-filled New Year in 2019. Please resolve to be kind to and love one another. Check in on your neighbors. Please support the Parish House and Salvation Army this holiday season. Drop off some canned goods or a jar of peanut butter or a coat you're not wearing anymore. See you all back on January 3 as we continue together to move our wonderful BU community forward. God bless us, everyone. That's all I have. I'd entertain a motion, we adjourned.
That moved.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion, call for the question. All those in favor adjourned at 8:30. Signify by saying aye.